Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November 6th, West Fargo City Commission Meeting. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next is the approved the order of the agenda. We do not, I do not have any changes.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay. Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next item, approve the minutes of the October 16th meeting.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Building permits. Any questions on the building permits? Just note that next week, they will be putting up some Christmas trees and they will be putting out a mailbox for our youngsters and others to send letters to Santa. Got a note from Santa today that said, for all you commissioners that are going to send Santa a letter of request for presents to keep it under 25 pages. So, keep that in mind. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve? Second?
I thought you were looking for revenge there. Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. On to the regular agenda, consideration of revised bus route number 24. Larry, and Julie, and Matt, and at, etc.
I'll just introduce this and then Matt from, Matt Bus is also here to discuss it with you and answer any questions. We just last fall began Route 24, which extends from West Acres down to Sanford Hospital and then south to 32nd Avenue, taking in Cashwise and Eagle Run and so on. The, there was a request recently from resident or residents in a neighborhood in South Pond to take a look at revising the route slightly to change from going down Sixth Street East, which is a narrow residential street, to along, down Fourth, Fourth Street and then 31st Avenue. So, it's only a block off of where it was before on 32nd. And so, we followed up and discussed that further with Matt Bus, went out and drove the area, discussed that with Commissioner Simmons some, and there were a lot of things that may seem to make sense with that in mind. So, it is being considered this evening as a revision to the bus route. If it were approved by the commission, it would be forwarded on just for ratification by the Fargo City Commission and then effective December 1st. And with that, Matt Peterson had some additional information that he provided to you and lay down this evening, and he's here to can address that and answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, Fisher, as Larry said, I'm Matt Peterson with Matt Bus. I'm the Assistant Transit Director. The packet that I handed out right before the meeting is just an outline of where Route 24 currently services, and on the second page shows the section that we would be changing from that Sixth Street over to Fourth Street up to 31st Avenue. So, it's a pretty small portion of the route. With that, we did get some software this year that helps us to identify any environmental statistics that we need to take a look at, environmental justice pieces. And so, I ran those numbers this morning. It's a very minimal impact. So, at this time, Matt Bus has no concerns if you guys did decide to go ahead with the change to that route. Of course, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there any questions to Matt? So, this would take effect January 1?
On December 1st, actually. And that's because since the route is 50/50 with Fargo and West Fargo, we would bring this in front of the Fargo City Commission in two weeks at their next meeting.
Okay.
So, that everyone's on board.
Any other questions to Matt? Not, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve? Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Item number two, West Fargo Area Community Program Funding Request. Frank.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Frank Lenzmeyer. I'm here representing the West Fargo Area Community Program. You have two sheets in front of you. The first one is the city budget that we are operating under, the breakdown of how the money's been spent. And through the 17th of September, we paid rent and program supplies, leaving a balance at that time of $14,399. Then you'll see beyond that where the entries on the sheet with no dates to the left of them is the projected use of the budget from now through the end of the year. In September, you'll see that there's 3,419 projected. Now, there'll be some more program monies come out of that 3,400. It'd be, we don't anticipate it to be a lot. The $6,000 transfer we're requesting that shows up on that line, if you'll go to the second sheet that I gave you, reflects our special projects budget. We started out in September of 2015 with a $10,000 balance in that project. And you'll see a breakdown of how we've spent all that money over the last couple of years, doing things, reaching beyond the group of seniors that participates in our meal site, such as senior movie at Fargo Theater. One time, we had a meeting at the VFW where we provided a meal and we had a lot of people interviewing seniors in our area about their needs and concerns. You gentlemen were at the, were invited to the one we had at the VFW. Then, we move on and we had our extravaganza last April, and we touched a lot of seniors with that project. And you can see there's a breakdown. We've gotten it down to where we got about $28 left in that account. The reason for our request of the $6,000 transfer is to transfer into this special projects account, which we operate those out of. And that's basically, I'm open for any questions. That's what we're about here. One other thing I can say, on the balance of the budget, you'll see we look like we're going to have a little over $3,000 left. We'd like to, you know, know that we'd like to be able to utilize that money, paying it to the Valley Senior Services towards that bus. You know, the project that I talked to you, Rich, about here earlier this year, we were going to try to buy a van this year for that. And that, those buses are strictly geared to West Fargo rides. And they, they're the ones that we have the city of West Fargo logos on now. So, that would be the contemplated use of our budget for this year.
Frank, it's my understanding that you can't spend, you can't carry money over and that it has to be spent on programming. If it's not spent, then it comes back to the city. Am I right on that, Tina, or am I wrong on that? Or John, maybe you can answer that.
That is correct, Mayor. Generally, unless it's a dedicated restricted cash fund, like a bond fund or something like that, you spend it or that it goes back to the general fund. So, you generally don't carry over balances year over year.
How did we do that last year then, John? Because I thought we let them keep the money last year.
Last, last year, they had also, I believe, requested the funds that are left over in that line item. And they were told that, like many other places, whether it's library, whoever, whatever's left in that line item is unspent. The money's there if they need it, and if they don't spend it, then it just stays in the general fund.
Like, like the usual government bureaucracy, that's like, okay, let's go spend it before the end of the year. That's just crazy, the way we do that. And I realize you, I realize you can't control that, Tina, I get it. But it's still, it's just silly. You know, when you, when you got to turn the money back in, then, rather than, I'd go spend the money.
Well-
That's what, that's what we're telling our departments to do, quite honestly.
Well, we're asking them to be fiscally responsible because this money, like, whether it's the senior center or whoever, it comes right out of the general fund. So, this is true taxpayer dollars. And so, because they're an organization that, they don't have, I can't even describe, it's, they have to come in, the agreement the city had with them was, we will put X amount of dollars aside, and if you need money for programming or whatever, we, you show us what you bought, we'll give you the money.
So, okay.
And that was how we've done it. I understand what you're saying, but there's some things that, that's just how it is. Otherwise, we could just write a check at the beginning of the year and give them the whole amount. And then taxpayers would say, well, how do you know it's even being used for anything related to that? And we don't. We wouldn't. I mean, I'm not saying they wouldn't. But I'm just saying, that's kind of a checks and balance for the taxpayer.
So, are they able to pre-book anything for like next year on those funds? Could they pre-pay something or pre-book?
If they have, like I said, if they turn in items for payment, like let's say they had something that they needed to pay for next year, and they still have budget left in this year, they could turn it in. And as long as it's approved by you guys, it could be spent. The money's there specifically only to be used by that organization for their events and activities and so forth. And if so, if they have something, yes, they can turn it in and it can be approved or whatever by you guys. But beyond that, it's been a recurring thing where we just haven't just written out a check. That's just the way it's been.
If I, if I may, from our point, the reason for this request, we have been negotiating with the VFW to move our meal site over there. It's been delayed and delayed and delayed. We're now going to get a decision on the 15th of this month. We had people from the VF at our meal site here this last month, showed them they ate a meal, whether some showed them how it worked. We are going, we need to get new literature printed, trifoils, quite a bit of stuff that we're going to need to do by the end of the year here. And that's part of the reasons for this. We can show the use of every dollar that we've used since we first came online on a budget item here where we've spent the money. We have tried to be as a group, very, very frugal with the monies we've spent.
Sure, and I get that.
We don't want to be cut, cut short, you know, right between now and the end of the year.
So, will this not work? Is that what we're saying, or what you want us to do?
No.
Kind of, kind of getting back to what Mark had just mentioned, if there's costs, like brochures or kitchen fit up or things that you have to do and you, you know that you're going to have those costs before the end of the year, as long as you have bids or line, them listed with amounts, we, you still have until the end of the year to utilize those funds. So, if you have items you need or you know you're going to need, all you have to do is bring them forward.
So, so-
Yeah, we understand. We've, and that's worked well. We see a time crunch coming with getting, knowing by the 15th and then moving on all the things we want to do.
I guess, Tina, what, what are the things, Frank, is that, you know, the VF has pushed back their moving date now by a couple of months. So, that obviously pushes everything back. That pushes their products back. That's what we're kind of saying. So, I think, Frank, the bottom line is, if we can get some of that stuff bid on that you need for the new facility and things like that, if we can get a bid for it, to say, this is what it's going to cost us, then we can do it. Is that what I'm hearing?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that will work, as best we can do. And the other money, Frank, just so I'm, I'm straight now, the $6,000, you're not asking for any more money. You just want to transfer that into the other fund, right?
Exactly. The special projects fund, exactly.
The only problem is, is according to his budget sheet, you have $3,400. So, that would be excess.
No, the $6,000 included, I think.
That's projected after these expenditures.
That's already in there.
There'd be a balance left in the budget.
After the $6,000?
Sorry?
After the $6,000?
Yes, yeah. If you look at the second of the sheet.
Is that legal to do that? Can they do that?
We have budgeted in there, Mike, all the things that are going to be spent between now and the end of the year.
Okay, I see.
On that sheet I provided you.
That's what I thought we were talking about, you bringing in bids to say, this is why we need that $6,000. And then the city says, okay, if those are the things you're going to purchase, here you go.
I was referring to the 3,400. Yeah, I was, I was referring to the $6,000. That's the same way then.
I missed something there.
The request on the table, I believe, is $6,000 for senior programs. And if, if what I understood was correct, it sounded like you wanted to use some of those funds for pamphlet printing, for things to get you ready for the kitchen and the VFW, all those kinds of things. So, the comment was, just to get a list of those expenses, what you're going to spend them on, whether you have bids or whatever, bring that in, and then we can cut you a check for those items. We just can't say, well, here's $6,000. We need to use, we need you to get your bids of things or amounts.
I understand.
And, and it's not a problem. The money's there for you, but you have to show us a breakdown so that we can show that, yep, that's what they're going to use the money for. You don't have to already spend it.
You have some work to do before the end of the year then. We can discuss it later. Try to figure it out.
Yeah. We, we want to be sure when we get, get involved in some of these commitments that we can pay the bills on time, you know, to the people that we're dealing, dealing with.
I wish that shouldn't be a problem.
Well, thank you for listening to me. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Item three, second reading on the ordinance agreement, four dash four six oh point nine, increased total sign area. Again, this is second reading, and again, Commissioner Thorsted is going to abstain from this vote.
Yes, Your Honor, members of the commission. The ordinance amendment was reviewed at the last commission meeting. Public hearing was held and a first reading given. Again, the area here pertains to, or the amendment pertains to, those signs along the Main Avenue corridor and allowing for signs to be brought closer to the property line and utilized for, on the basis that there's a more boulevard area than, than is common in other local streets or major streets in the city.
Any questions to Larry? Again, this is second reading. If not, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item four, second reading and final plot approval of the West Fargo Seventh Edition replat, blocks one and lot one, block two of West Fargo Third Edition. Again, Larry.
Yes, Your Honor, members of the commission. The West Fargo Seventh Edition has been in the making for quite some time. Process started over a year ago. There was a public hearing held on this on October 3rd of 2016. There's been considerable amount of time and effort put into the title work for the area. The property is, is all owned by either the city or Southeast Cass Water Resource District. So, it took quite a bit of time to get the legal information together. The, there are a couple properties, three properties to be exact, in the West Fargo Third Edition that was discovered, had been zoned inappropriately in the past. And so, we're trying to correct that. It's, it's in the general vicinity here, and we're trying to correct that with, with this plat and rezoning. And so, that is a part of it. It consists of, there's a map in your, in your information. There's an area that is a rail spur, as well as a couple of other properties. One that was actually zoned public and should be industrial for industrial purposes, and another that was left as agricultural and it should be public. The main reason that that took place was we had a plat that was presented as a final plat. And between the time that the city commission approved that plat and until the plat was recorded, the, the numeration of the lots and blocks changed. And so, on the ordinance that it approved, the rezoning didn't correspond with, with the plat that had been finally recorded. So, addressing that this evening, procedural in nature and so on, I'd be open for any questions the commission might have.
Any questions to Larry? If not, do I hear a motion? One more time, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, put on a second reading.
Yeah.
We sleep in here tonight.
Okay, moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item five, downtown plaza options. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. When the plaza got approved for construction, probably a month ago now, there was some discussion about, you know, some further details. And as the designs firm up, we'll bring in those details for you. But want to go through kind of the, now that we know the, the land dedication funding piece, give you kind of a quick overview. And so, what we have set out here is just a breakdown of the, the original cost estimate, which is at $800,000. Nothing's changed there. But you can see the VFW's portion, how that comes in. The original, or the plan today is to use sales tax dollars to fund that. So, and then also give the VFW, they're going to pay over a period of 10 years. And so, sales tax would cover it. And then when the VFW pays, we'll just reimburse the sales tax. In addition, I want to give you, there was a question about, you know, what's getting picked out and, and how we're proceeding down there. I want to open up just a real quick discussion and get, get some feedback from you. One is about a, a rink system, which would include some boards. The other is a portable stage, whether or not you want to pursue that or not. My recommendation at this point is, we don't need them immediately. And so, although they're in the original bid, that could be something that we could strike out and, and just not get until we're sure that's what we want to do. There are some benches specked out. They recommend charcoal or this, this white color. I've started for you. Again, I'm not sure that this is the detail you want to get into, but we can, when the final selections are made, I'll bring them forth and say, this is where we're at, and give you a chance to, of course, approve it or disapprove. That's just another example of a giant planner, same colors. Furniture. One conversation or one thing for you to think about is that the space is intended to be flexible. With that, you know, to get away from your standard picnic table that would be down there, one proposal is some street furniture. The positive in that is that it's a distinct look and you can, it's really flexible. You can move it around. The negative is that it's really flexible and you can move it around. There's, this is in the bid to supply 32 chairs and eight tables. The, the landscape architect swears up and down that, you know, there aren't issues and they do this all over. I have no idea. So, that's another consideration for you to think about. The last item I have in your packet is, oh, I got a bike rack in here. I'll put that in. If you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, there's a aluminum fence that's between the off-the-wall property and the park property. And that's what's currently specked out right there. So, with that, I'm open for any questions you might have. Another comment that was made in the last movie was, or in the last meeting was a MOU between the parks. Tina is going to include that in all of our documentation going forward when it comes to land dedication. So, that's being taken care of as well. So, with that, I'm open for any questions.
Quite frankly, I, A, I think we need to do this right. But B, I'm not a furniture expert. So, you know, that-
Yep, and this would be a great opportunity.
Somebody more knowledgeable than me. I don't know.
This would be a great opportunity. Like I said, this was picked out by Land Elements, a landscape architectural firm. This is their recommendation. We're okay with it. We can move forward. If you'd like to set up a committee to look at it further, I'm open. I'm just moving forward with kind of the design draft that they gave us. And I want to make sure that you guys have an opportunity to pick apart any pieces that you want, frankly.
I think there really should be a committee though that kind of goes through this, you know, rather than the commission pick out each item. I mean, and they could come with recommendations rather than the whole, the whole thing.
Yeah, I, for me, I'm looking for an approval of the overall budget.
To kind of keep, yeah, keep things rolling.
Yep, and then we'll come back, however you want to do it. If you want a little subcommittee, or if you want to just, you want me to bring in chairs and say, what do you think of this one? I'm open to, open to anything. Because I am also not a furniture expert.
Well, no, we want to build a lot of flexibility into the space, you guys, and I get all that. But I still think there should be some planning involved as to what we want to have happening down there before we start buying rinks and portable stages and even chairs, quite frankly. Because, I mean, yeah, you got a place for people to sit and come and go and that kind of stuff. But I mean, there should be a plan of some sorts about what we want to have happen there, along with the VFW, whoever else is going to be involved in this whole area down there. It's like, what's, what's the big scheme of things here? What do we want to have happen in the winter and the summer? You know, what are some things that we can be, you know, planning ahead of time so that we can be spending our money wisely? They're just piling up equipment that we don't know what to do with.
Correct. We actually, so we're in discussions right now with a nonprofit that would, would be titled West Fargo Events. And the idea is to work with our current Visitors and Events Committee and set up some opportunities for events downtown. So, I think you're spot on, you know, what is the vision. But currently, the vision, like I said, is flexibility. So, a lot of this, other than the rink, is just designed with that in mind, so that you can do a lot of different things.
Matt, you came before us a month ago or whatever and, and kind of said the same thing. So, what, what is, I guess, what is the difference between then and now? Are you just trying to kind of keep us aware of everything to keep us on track?
Yeah.
Getting a little, I'm getting like a little confused of, really don't need to know the color of the chairs and the color of the concrete.
The, the real change is the, the decision is made to go forward with the sales tax or present that to you as an idea. Before, I presented the budget and said, here, it's $800,000. There are, there's an array of options on how you want to fund the gap that we're not getting from the developer or from the VFW. And we, at that time, we, we, the staff didn't necessarily know where the land dedication conversation was going to go with the parks, if there was going to be money left over that you wanted to put toward this. And so, now the recommendation is, now that we, there is some land dedication money available, we know what that amount is, we can come to you and say, okay, here, here's a possibility. What do you think?
Right, okay. So, that's, that's the gist of it.
Yep. The rest of it is just updating you and we can continue. And then I also, if you have a recommendation on a process that you're comfortable with, when we pick out those final detailed items, I'm all ears. Whatever makes- Whatever makes you the most comfortable. I can continue to bring it in one by one, or you could have a subcommittee, whatever you guys would like.
Is the funding going to change every time you make this decision? I mean, I guess I'm more interested in the funding and how we're going to fund it and kind of the general cost. We're not going to be able to get right down to the penny, looking at this stuff.
No, there shouldn't be a substantial change. That's why we brought forth a package. You know, if there's some extreme thing, we pick one way or the other, I would, of course, bring that in and get that approved above and beyond the current budget. But we ought to be able to pick different elements within this package.
What do we have budgeted for it right now? What do we...
Right now, it's at eight hundred thousand.
And then you're showing us here, right? Where we're going to come up with some of the funding?
Yep.
Okay. So, that's kind of what you're asking us, are we okay with this funding?
Yep.
With the amount, right? That's, and you want a motion on that?
Need a motion, please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve this funding. We can go through the specifics of the colors and all that, but let's, I just want to slow things down and, it's a tally-ality or whatever at all. I want to keep that moving. Is that the word? I don't know, but it's...
There's no. There's no.
It is now, it's Mark's word, yeah.
Okay, I'll second that.
Yeah. Thinking of moving. John, when are you guys moving?
December fifteenth.
December fifteenth, so that's coming up real quick.
Yeah, and that's what I don't want to slow down.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thanks, Matt, and keep us posted.
Not to drag you back in, do you want to do a subcommittee?
Oh, furniture experts. Item six, consideration for abatement or refund of taxes for Cashwise, Nick.
Mayor and Commissioners, I bring for you two abatements filed by JW Chadman Associates, representing Cashwise for 2016 and 17 tax years. As you may recall, Cashwise appealed their 2017 value through the formal boards, resulting in no change at any level. These appeals tonight are different as they're for 2016 and 2017, and they're asking for a value approximately a half million dollars less than they asked for last year. The Cashwise building is a sixty-five thousand square foot big box grocery building with an accompanying twenty-one thousand square foot car wash. It opened in the summer of 2015 and received a partial value for 2015. The abatements tonight reflect the first two full taxable years of value on this property. A little background here, Cashwise is appealing their stores throughout the state at both the formal board levels and through abatement. Additionally, this year specifically, we've been seeing tax reps for Sam's Club, Walmart, and Menards filing on most of their stores throughout the state using the abatement process. Cashwise's abatement itself included no additional information as to why the value should be reduced, and no contact was made with us prior to filing the abatement. As with any abatement, we have done our due diligence and have provided you with the information which supports our value, and it is our recommendation that the valuation be upheld with no change in assessment for either years. And I need two motions on this, because they're separate abatements.
Go ahead, John.
Do you need to ask if the applicant for the abatement is here?
Sure.
Before you... Motion.
Is there, is there somebody here from that group? They never do.
Hold on to motions, I'm...
We should note for the record, to help build the record, that they did not show up at the hearing and did not bring any evidence.
So you need a motion to...
Yeah, what are the two motions you need, Nick?
What are the two motions? You're going to have to either lift that up or shrink down or something.
Yeah, no kidding. Why don't come if you're enough to, we're not...
Is that as high as it goes?
Don't bother.
Yeah, by the time you get it that high, we'll be home anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it's separate motions for 2016 and 2017.
So we would need a motion to deny for 2016 and 2017, right?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, that, for 2016?
And twenty, is it one, two separate motions, John?
Two separate motions for two separate abatements. Yeah.
Moved to deny for 2016 first, how's that?
Okay.
Moved in second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now I'll entertain one for 2017.
Make a move to deny for 2017.
I'll second that one.
Moved in second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Nick. Item seven, report from Tina.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just have a few things, and then Chris has something he would like to come up here and discuss with you in relation to the Thirteenth Avenue project that's coming up for next year. First of all, in respect to that project, the Thirteenth Avenue, we're having a meeting tonight at seven o'clock. A letter was sent out along with a map showing the phasing and the accesses for the project for next year to all the commercial businesses in the entire area. And so we'll be holding a meeting tonight to go through that with them so they have a full understanding of the access areas and the project and how we plan to keep, the plan right now is to keep everything going. There will always be a lane going east and west, and it's different turns in and turns out, left lanes, so forth. So we're going to go through that with them in detail. We wanted this to be their first introduction to it, rather than when they get a letter in the mail telling them about their project and the Assessment District and so on and so forth. So that will be at seven down the hall. The next item I want to discuss with you is for the Cheyenne Street project, the Assessment District, or the Improvement District, is extremely large, obviously, because it's encompassing everything from Thirteenth to Fortieth Avenue. And in order to do a mailing, it would cost between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars to mail out notices of the project and the hearing dates and so on and so forth. In the past, the city has sometimes sent those letters out. We're not required by law, we just, the law only requires them in the legal section. But in a way, in order to be proactive on certain projects, specifically street improvement projects that you can protest out, we have sent out letters. Because this project is so public and we've had so much information going out about it, our suggestion was rather than spending fifteen thousand dollars to send out a mailing to people that they may or may not look at, what we wanted to do besides the legal notice was to place a front page ad in the West Fargo Pioneer, a noticeable ad describing the project, and also directing them to westfargostreets.com, or just streets.com? I can't think of the name of the website, whatever. Anyway, just streets.com, so that they can find additional information and they can also find out, like, keep track of dates and protest hearing dates and construction dates and access information. Along with that, we would like to create large signs that would be put along the corridor, both traveling north and south in various locations, directing people to westfargostreets.com for project information. Those would be put up sooner, not later, so that people, we can start building information in that area. We also planned on putting information in the utility bills and other venues that we could. And my question for you tonight is, are you comfortable with that, rather than sending out a mailing?
Is it legal?
Yes, legally, we're only required to put it in the legals section. And we've generally, for a project this size, it would just be extremely expensive, and I don't know that if we'd get the benefit out of it. It just adds more cost to the district.
Can we put it in the water bills?
Yep, we can also put it in the water bills, yes. And that's why we thought if we did an ad in the paper, put information in the utility bill, put up signs, we stand a better chance of starting to get people, not only will they know about the hearing date through the mailing, or through the utility bills and through the ad in the paper, but they will also, we want them to get used to going to our website to find information because as we get into next year's construction season, things are going to constantly be changing, and we're going to have to have a spot where people can go to know what's new and up and coming on the project.
I think our big street signs, Chris, would actually do better than even a mailing anyway. Because, I mean, everybody's looking at those now. I think that would be the way to go, but if we could throw it in utilities as well, I'm fine with that.
Everything, I'm good.
Social media and our website. If we can do a push through our email, you had a lot of email addresses for the utility bill. If you can push it out, push the email out. I think that makes a lot of sense. You'll probably hit more people than you would...
I think you would, than when, yeah. Why can't we do a sign that points to the business? How to get to a business?
Well, and that is something that will happen as we get forward planning the project. What this is right now is, it's just to let them know this project is still coming. If you've been under a rock and didn't know this project was coming, this project is coming, look here. But as we get close, and actually things are getting bit out and timelines are going in, all of that is part of the project, all of those items that, it will be signage for businesses, all those things.
Because we didn't do that with the Ninth and Thirteenth, and those businesses were always calling Matt and I about, why couldn't we do that? And I just fear that this may happen again.
Correct. And this, for the Cheyenne Street project, there will be written in there, from my, it's my understanding from talking with Melissa and Chris and Dustin, that we will have a section written in there about communication with the public and traffic routing and business signage, things like that. But the point of this particular one is, do we want to do a mailing to let people know about the Improvement District? Or do we want to do ads and targeted information?
And, use the alternative to...
Okay, all righty. And then for those of you that accepted the challenge to get up and be in Moorhead tomorrow morning at seven-thirty, we have eggs and issues, and Matt will be on the panel to discuss economic development. And the last thing I have is, in a meeting with Excel, and I think I sent you some information about that, we had talked about doing a CIP planning meeting. And basically what that was is, Excel mentioned to us that, you know, they plan their projects out so many years, and it would be helpful for them if they knew what we were doing and we knew what they were doing. And so in the discussion, Chris, Dustin, all of us decided that, okay, so we're going to invite all of the utility companies in on a specific date, ask them to bring their project information, we'll have ours, and just have a sit-down so that if there's a coordination, a way to save money, a way to make it easier, we can just kind of push the information out there to them. That will be before the end of the year. I was shooting for the end of the month on the thirtieth. I'm not sure if that will work for everybody yet. We're still working on it, but we'll let you know when that is. Just so that you know, we're coordinating with utilities to try and get things to work a little more smoothly in the future. Now, I will let Chris come up and talk to you about the Thirteenth Avenue project.
Well, Mayor and Commissioners, I'll make this quick, hopefully. Right up, I put up a graphic of Thirteenth Avenue. We're looking at reconstructing, our original thought was reconstructing Thirteenth Avenue as current configuration. And as we started to do some more analysis, we determined that we needed to put in some right turn lanes. So what I have up there is red boxes represent wherever a place we would need to have a right turn lane going to the businesses to the north. We're looking at one at Sixteenth Street, one at Fourteenth Street, one at Twelfth, and one at Ninth Street. The Ninth Street's already constructed. So once we mapped out where all these turn lanes would go in, we kind of looked at the blue boxes where we'd still continue to have medians. And we said, would it really make sense to leave those blue boxes as boulevards? Or should we actually make that into a continuous acceleration lane? So that was our thought process behind that. We threw together some quick monkey math, used one of Dustin's terms, and we estimated the additional ninety thousand dollars roughly in pavement. So our recommendation is just to put one continuous third lane eastbound, excuse me, westbound on Thirteenth Avenue project.
When you came up with that ninety thousand dollars, Chris, did you take account into that with the boulevards, you'd have to plant grass and trees and stuff? Did you, because I don't think it's going to be ninety thousand dollars. I mean, I think you got to take that off of there, right? Closer to, you see what I'm saying?
Well, we'll be getting closer.
The actual...
The actual cost, I'm sure.
Yeah, the actual cost. I mean, there's no additional cost for...
Trying to make it look better here, Chris, so...
I mean, we're right in that ballpark, you know? We bid high, you know, we're calling ninety, hundred thousand, but certainly not going to come back at a hundred and fifty.
No, no, but I'm just saying, it is going to make a difference if you don't have to do grass and all that.
Look, we don't have to do grass, the curbs will be the same amounts. We're just paving, the additional paving, it's very inexpensive for the safety factor. Actually, having to be able to turn down that lane and accelerate instead of getting out into traffic is going to help also.
I drive this road many times a day, and where it's so nice is by Walmart, because they have exactly what you're talking about. So you can go all the way from Walmart to the Spitfire. And, you know, what happens is the people that are going to turn get in that lane, so I can whiz by pretty quickly.
Yep.
Speed limit in the other one. It works out, it's just a good, it really is a good deal. Even actually on Main Avenue, it's kind of almost the same, isn't it, by the pipeline? You almost have a third lane.
Yep, we have that third lane when you get east to Ninth Street, west to, east to Ninth Street.
It would be a good deal.
I agree. If that's your consensus of all you guys, we'll go ahead with that.
One more thing, sorry.
Well, I'm just not believing that story that it's only going to be ninety thousand dollars. I'm finding that hard to believe.
You know, we got about nine hundred feet of ten feet wider road. So that's about, what we did, about a thousand, thousand square yards of concrete. And we used eighty dollars per square yard of concrete, that's eighty thousand dollars.
I'm all for it, I'm all for it, yeah. I just am having a hard time with ninety thousand dollar number. Damn cheap.
Yeah. I mean, the only thing adding is a little bit added concrete. It's not that expensive. We're not doing any added, no underground, the same amount of curb and gutter. That's all we're...
With just concrete, set up.
Sure will.
Quick question for you, Chris, regarding this. Now, you're going to have a meeting at seven regarding this stuff, I suppose, with the businesses there, about the continuation of the Thirteenth and Ninth intersection project next year, because there's still work to do north of Thirteenth, and that may or may not adversely affect those businesses again on that corner.
Certainly, I mean, we're still going to be continuing north and south on Ninth Street itself. Thirteenth Avenue intersection is done, so that'll still continue to go east and west. And some of the thoughts we're having right now is, we will only be, we will not close Twelfth Street, which is that first entrance going in there, until all the work on Ninth Street is completed. We will not allow them to work into Twelfth Street. And then we will never actually close Twelfth and Fourteenth at the same time. So we'll always have one or other of those intersections for all those businesses to the north.
Okay, because I know the businesses on that corner complained about an extreme drop in traffic.
Okay.
Now they're happy, it's open again. Other question is, and I don't know if there's anything you can do, if Fargo's doing their side of it, that Seventeenth Street, right at Slumberland, that crossover to Loews there, especially on a weekend, that is a nightmare. And I don't know if there's any solutions there, if you're going to widen out Seventeenth to include more lanes to, so you don't have the traffic backing up, and you got people going to cut across between the two shopping centers. And I don't know if that's been included in Fargo and West Fargo's discussion.
It has been. We're looking at dividing, though, if you're going southbound on Seventeenth, coming to that intersection, we're going to divide out. And we're currently, we have a left, a through-left and a right-turn lane. We'll have each direction separated out with a dedicated left-turn arrow. That way, we'll get people in the right lanes, and you don't have that fighting, that northbound, they not really know if they're turning or not turning, and sort of clean up the whole intersection. We haven't really gotten, we discussed about taking the project farther north to that frontage road, trying to figure out what to do with that frontage road is the next question. And we thought maybe that's a little bit too much of a project creep, and we're actually dealing with the Thirteenth Avenue project. But on the other hand, we're never going to have another project in that area for a long time. If we want to fix that, we'd now is the time to actually fix that.
If you can handle more cars down towards the intersection, that might help.
May help, yeah. I follow permission, I use that road too, and I found the best solution, I found, is to close your eyes and gun it. They normally stop, if they don't, then you've got a problem, but otherwise, they'll stop.
I mean, certainly investigate some alternatives. I know there was, it was probably about ten years ago, we had a little traction in trying to fix that problem up there, and we just couldn't quite find an acceptable solution with all the businesses there that use that interchange.
Did you say Fargo was doing something, or they're looking at it, on their side?
What's kind of motivated us on our side is Fargo was doing theirs.
Fargo's doing theirs, yeah.
And that's why we thought, well, it might be a good time to do ours.
Look at it, yeah.
We bid the project together, so we're designing it together, so there's that continuity going all the way through.
Okay.
After something you can do there, because like on weekends, it's a nightmare. And like I said, we got guys like Mark visiting through the intersections.
How's First Avenue?
First Avenue is, actually, they got most of the pavement done. So they still need to saw and seal the joints. My guess, they probably won't do that till next year, but we should be able to have the pavement open by end of this week, probably. Should have cure time, so some backfilling. So hopefully, we should be able to have it open, so we can plow it.
Awesome.
I noticed in front of McDonald's there, they had it... I noticed in front of McDonald's there, they had it, they had it done, and then they covered it all up.
Well, with colder weather, concrete needs to, needs to get to a certain temperature to actually cure, so it actually generates heat, so you got to try and insulate to keep that heat in there. So it takes longer for them to, for the concrete to get to full strength, so that's why they cover and insulate it.
That will be open too?
Yep.
By Friday?
Well, that's, if they reach that cure strength...
At Thanksgiving.
It's, I mean, hopefully Friday, Mark, I'd love to tell you a definite answer.
I know, it's just that whole, that whole project is bad.
Yeah, you know, completion date originally was August fifteenth, so...
How much are we holding? We going to hold the fair amount back then till next year?
What is, do you look at it?
As of this...
Till next year?
Yes.
Because, we did withhold eighty thousand dollars from this last payment that was just made, specifically for the lateness of the project. So we haven't gotten to the point of processing a final payment, there might be some other damages to incorporate as well, but at this point, they're eighty thousand dollars late, if you will. Isn't there, would there be a good chance if they're going to wait, I don't know how big a section that is, to cut the joints till next spring? There's a lot of, I mean, is that, that could affect the whole pork, and it's...
That's the only thing that's holding back Thirteenth Avenue from being open all the way right now, it's going underground, so hoping to be able to widen out those joints and put some hot, some, seal them back up, but the temperature has to be above thirty-two and the pavement needs to be dry, so I doubt they're going to see that weather this year, and I don't think, they're certainly won't have enough time on First Avenue to do all that.
It's supposed to be thirty-eight, forty next week.
Is it really?
Stay positive, it will.
Last question, when is our comp plan supposed to be open?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a brief update. The Army Corps of Engineers received both agreements, signed off on them, they deposited the checks that we sent, and so they should be processing the four oh eight permits, and that's for both Cheyenne Street and for the diversion road, so...
Kind of slow on everything except depositing checks.
I was going to say, they're pretty timely on the check depositing part, aren't they? And I'm guessing pulling the money out of the check afterward, too.
Anything else? If not, there are here a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Moved in second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.